Welcome, everybody. Welcome to the June 3th Lebanon County Commissioners Meeting. This meeting is being recorded and will become part of public record. Anyone wishing to comment, please use the raise hand function at the bottom of your screen and if the chairman allows, we'll bring you in.
Thank you, Dawn. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the June 3rd Board of Commissioners Meeting. Call the meeting to order by asking for a moment of silence. Thank you. Please rise for the pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Now we'll ask if there are any hands raised for public comment. If not, we'll proceed to the minutes. Look for approval of the minutes of our May 20th meeting.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. We approved the May 20th meeting minutes. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs. So moved. Now we'll go to our treasurer Sally for her report.
Okay, we had receipts June the first and June the second of $951,555. Our total cash is $5,793,781.64. Our expenditures this week are $1,150,632.51, leaving us a balance of $4,643,149.13.
Okay.
I'll make a motion. Make a motion to accept the treasurer's report as read.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve treasurer Newans' report. Comment or question? If not, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Post same signs. So moved. Thank you, Sally. Anything else this morning?
Nope, that's it.
All right. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Now we'll move on to our HR department. Michelle Idris.
Morning, Michelle Idris, Director of Human Resources. Under Personnel Transactions, Resignations and Terminations, Nicholas Braemer, Accountant One, Termination Effective June 2nd. Louis Eisenberg, Assistant Director of Fiscal, Resignation Effective June 16th. Adamu Abdurmain, Network Technician, Resignation Effective May 27th. Jody Moran, Full-Time Correctional Officer, Removal, Effective May 20th. Quinn Peters, Full-Time Correctional Officer, Resignation Effective May 20th. Emily Rydell, Case Worker Two, Resignation Effective June 11th. And Matthew Bartle, Casual Part-Time Deputy Sheriff, Rescind Offer of Employment Effective June 2nd.
Make a motion to approve the resignations and terminations.
I'll second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any comment or question? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Post same signs. So moved.
There are changes of status, transfers, and promotions. We have Sydney Parker, Change of Status from Probation Officer One in the Juvenile Unit to Probation Officer One in the Adult Unit. No change in her rate effect or his rate, excuse me, effective June 14th, 2021.
Make a motion to approve the changes of status as read.
Second.
Moved and seconded that we approved that probation transaction. Any comment or question or discussion? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs. So moved.
Moving on to Salary Board, Motion to Approve All Transactions Previously Read Plus the Following. Gio Franco Valdez, Full-Time Deputy Sheriff, A Salary Increase to $1,224.73 Bi-Weekly Effective May 30th. Thomas Fulmer, Longevity Payment Full-Time Correctional Officer at the Jail, A One-Time Payment of $1,250 Effective June 17th. Crystal Herr, Longevity Payment Full-Time Correctional Officer at the Jail, A One-Time Payment of $1,500 Effective July 1. And James McIntyre, An Incremental Increase Full-Time Correctional Officer at the Jail To The Rate of $17.52 Per Hour Effective June 13th. And Juan Lopez, Incremental Increase Full-Time Correctional Officer at the Jail To The Rate of $17.52 Per Hour Effective June 13th.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approved those Salary Board transactions. Any question or comment regarding the motion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs. So ordered.
Morning.
Good morning.
Morning. Leanne Chang, Human Resources Assistant with the Conference Seminars Request. Under Mandated, I have Dwight Penberth and Jermaine McQueen from Probation Services would like to attend the Pepper Spray In-House Instructor Recertification in Clarion County. August 11th, $597 Total Registration Fee With Lodging and Meals Reimbursement, Six Credits Mandated by JCGC.
Make a motion.
No, sorry.
All right.
Dawn, you can sort that out. We have a motion and any discussion regarding that mandated conference. Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. So moved.
There are non-mandated Diana Henriquez from Clerk of Courts would like to attend the PAPCC Conference in Lancaster. June 23rd, $125 Total Registration Fee With Mileage Reimbursement.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approved that Clerk of Courts request. Any comment or question? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs. So moved.
Jennifer Boyer from MDJ Ditzler's Office is requesting to attend the following five trainings. The first one is Advanced Accounting to Mechanicsburg, July 8th and 9th, with Mileage Meals and Tools Reimbursement.
Move to approve.
Second.
I just have a question, since they're all the same person from the same. Can we do a sweeping motion on that? Possible? Jamie? We could.
There's no cost to any of them either.
Yeah. Okay.
Is that okay with everyone with motion and second on the floor?
Yes.
Approving all requests by MDJ Ditzler for Jennifer Boyer, all non-mandated at no cost to the county. All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Post same signs. So moved. Thank you. Is that it? The end?
Yep, that's it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, we do have some recognition here for the employee that's retiring. Bring the person, people on board here, Audrey, Judge Tillwalk, and Jamie Harris. So can't see anyone. Don't be shy about your cameras. There's Audrey.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning, Audrey.
It is my understanding that Judge Tillwalk is in a hearing. He will join us if he's able.
Okay. Oh, so he may not be at the desk there. Okay. Gotcha. All right, and there she is.
Good morning. Good morning.
Jamie.
Good morning.
Well, Commissioners, I'm not sure how you want to start off. We do have a proclamation for her, obviously.
Well, let's start off with the reading of the proclamation for Jamie.
All right, let's do that. All right. Whereas Jamie Harris began her career with the County 11, employed as a correctional officer at the Correctional Facility on April 2nd, 2001. Transferring to Adult Probation as Probation Officer One on June 11, 2001. Whereas on October 6th, 2008, Jamie began a probation officer two, became a probation officer two, and on January 6th, 2013, was promoted to probation officer three, Field Supervisor. And whereas on September 11th, 2017, she became a probation officer one, Intake Pre-Sentence Investigation Officer. During her tenure, Jamie served the county with devotion and commitment to probation services. She performed her duties and responsibilities in a proficient manner. Whereas on June 12, 2021, Jamie will retire from probation services with over 20 years of distinguished service. Now therefore be resolved that we, the Commissioners of Lebanon County, on behalf of past boards of commissioners, past and present employees, and all our citizens, unite to thank Jamie for the outstanding service she provided during her many years at the county. Further, we extend congratulations and best wishes for a most rewarding future and very best retirement.
Thank you.
We'll seek a motion.
I'll make a motion. Go ahead, Commissioner. Go ahead. Sorry.
I'll make a motion. I'm sorry. I'll make a motion to approve this proclamation recognizing Jamie for her outstanding service to the county of Lebanon.
Thank you.
And I'll second that motion with congratulations and best, best wishes, Jamie, in your retirement.
Thank you.
The comment that I'll make is simply to congratulate you and thank you on behalf of a grateful county and wish you the best in your retirement. And if there are no other, well, we can accept other comments if there would be any others before we take a vote. Audrey, would you care?
Sure. You know, I've had the pleasure of working with Jamie in many capacities throughout her 20-year career with probation services. And you know, as a field officer, we were involved with foot pursuits and arrests and as part of the management team. And during that time, she's been a great role model for other employees, and she's earned the respect of her fellow officers and the individuals that she supervises. Because of Jamie's outstanding work ethic and her proficiency, she's been utilized often as a training officer for our newer staff. And I just want to make sure she knows that her presence will definitely be missed on this team, and it's been quite impactful. I wish her the best.
Thank you.
Thank you, Audrey. Jamie, any comments that you'd like to make?
I do, actually. Thank you for allowing me to be at this meeting. I want to thank several people. One are my former, my former bosses, as well as Audrey, my current boss, Jeff and Bowden, Sally Barry, and of course Audrey. Their leadership, they all have demonstrated were phenomenal. Not only were they leaders, but they cared about each and every one of us there at the probation department. And I couldn't have asked for better bosses. I'd also like to thank all the judges, Judge E B, Judge Tillwalk, Judge Klein, Judge Charles, Judge Jones. I just had great experiences with them. We had a great rapport, our department, with them. They held us to high expectations, but they also acknowledged our hard work and dedication out there in the field. So I also want to thank my colleagues. Not only were they my coworkers, but they were my brothers and sisters. They were my family. They were there for me for all my ups and downs, and I just appreciated that as well. And also to the police departments for always being there and backing us up, and we appreciate, you know, them keeping us safe and the community. So thank you.
Thank you. It was wonderfully presented. Thank you. Well, if there are no further comment, we'll seek the vote. All in favor, I'm sorry, Joelle.
Yeah, I just had a question on the lighter side. I mean, Audrey painted a picture for me of the two of you chasing people. I want to know who's the fastest runner and who.
Jamie. Jamie, without a doubt. No question.
Good sense of humor.
All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same signs. So moved. Jamie, that's your sendoff from the county, and we appreciate everything you've done for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's go with let's do the, the wardens contract for, I'm sorry, grant application. And then we can go to the, to John Wanger with the easement that's not on the agenda, but we'll need to walk through that anyway. So bring the warden in. I guess we can take Tillwalk. There you go.
See the warden?
Yep, at the bottom there.
Burn item.
Oh, burn a TM.
Gosh.
Oh, yeah, it doesn't. I understand.
Guess you were looking for someone else.
There we go.
That looks right to me.
There she is.
Sorry.
Good morning, warden.
Good morning.
If you'd like to introduce yourself, then you may proceed with your presentation.
Tina Lips, Warden at Lebanon County Correctional Facility. What I'm asking is, I had sent a memo over about our VIVITROL program that we had active in 2019. With COVID, we had to pause it. Previously, under Warden Carnes's administration, we had sought a grant, a MAT, Medical Assistant Treatment Grant through PCCD. And we were denied. The opportunity has come again for us to reapply, to get funding, so we can restart the MAT program. We were using VIVITROL to help our opioid and alcoholic populations reenter into the community. It's a non-comming match grant, meaning they would provide us the funding, and there wouldn't be an expectation for the county to contribute anything financially.
Seek a motion.
It's your turn, Commissioner Ames.
All right, make a motion to approve the grant application for the VIVITROL program.
A second motion.
Okay, it's been duly moved and seconded that we approved this grant application. All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Post same signs. So moved.
Thank you.
Thank you, warden. Have a good day.
You too. Thank you.
Okay. And before I get to the few things that I have here, let's go, if we could, with John Wanger. I know John's trying to squeeze this into his busy schedule and this is paramount to getting a grant application in for the park. The John Wanger Park that is in his father's memory. So there's John.
Can you see me?
Not yet.
Okay, I'm waiting. Waiting to see myself.
Dawn, can you make sure that John is able to share the screen? I think he's going to put up.
Yeah, that was my next question.
A map. I don't know if it's shared for all at this point or not.
Is there a line through the little video camera in the bottom corner of your screen, John?
Hold on.
If there is, just click on it.
There is. Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And now I see the share options. Great. Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning, John.
Time today to discuss. This is regarding the lease, sorry, not the lease, the easement agreement between the City of Lebanon and the county for the proposed John E. Wanger Memorial Park. Of course, in April, we submitted our application to DCNR in the amount of about $650,000 towards the park development. This easement agreement really should have been part of our submission at that time. I, I thought that the MOU that we had between the city and county was sufficient. But since then, Lori Yike has reached out to me and asked that, that we submit the signed easement agreement as part of the supplementary submissions that are allowed up until July 15th, which is next Friday. I will say that Lori's signaling in this process indicates to me that we have a pretty high chance, pretty high likelihood of getting this grant. I feel very confident about it based on her comments and the fact that she wants to make sure that everything is buttoned up and there are no exceptions.
Excuse me, John. Yeah, I just wanted to let you know that, by the way, the Mayor Capello has joined us.
Yes, great. Nice to see you, Mayor.
Sorry to interrupt you.
No problem. So what I'm going to share is the site plan for the park. If I can find it here. Can you see that?
No.
Uh, yeah.
Hold on one second. Okay, this will work. Should come up.
Something's happening. There you go.
Can you see it?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. So in the final discussion of the easement language, we did discover an issue that we needed to address with the city regarding the maintenance of the channel. And the city has needs for an access along this berm on the southern side of the flood channel for periodic maintenance and repairs, et cetera. So we were discussing even as late as this morning with Mayor Capello and council, how to address that. And the language for that area that's delineated by the yellow line is what the city would prefer to have some control over through approval of what gets installed in that buffer area. We've developed some co-use language, which I think was a great solution that will be acceptable to DCNR in that it's recognized in the easement agreement that, that the city will have needs to keep that area clear. So some of these trees might have to be moved away from the wall to avoid damage to the wall and to permit like a boom mower type piece of equipment to get in there and, and maintain that, that area. So we just actually, thanks to everybody's availability this morning, completed those revisions to the easement agreement. And what we'd be asking for now is for the Commissioners to pass a resolution authorizing the final execution of that easement agreement so that I can get it to Lori prior to the deadline next week. She's actually ideally, and I don't know if this is feasible or not, I'd like to get it to Lori tomorrow because she's leaving for vacation. And we'll be off all of next week prior to the actual deadline. There, if that's not feasible, we can submit it next week to her assistant. But I'd feel a little bit more comfortable getting it into Lori's hands directly before she leaves.
So I think this, I think the changes were made and, and emailed, you know, within the last half hour or so. So that should be good if it unless the Commissioners have some reservation today, once you're done explaining all of this. You know, that should be very feasible to do before she's out of town. She's, and she's key, preferring to Lori Kiefer Yike. Those of you may have heard that name and, or may not. She has just been a really, really good partner in DCNR for all of our trail and, and you know, second to John, has been responsible for really getting us through a lot of this over the last 20 years. So, yep.
Excellent. Yeah, let's see if there are any reservations. Go ahead, Commissioner.
I'll make a motion to approve the easement agreement with code language between the county and city to manage Wanger Park on the rail trail.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approved this season agreement with the co-use language. Any further discussion needed? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Post same signs. So ordered. There you go, John.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
It's eleven.
Capello didn't want to say.
Yeah, I didn't mean to stop your, your flow there, John, but, you know, many people who presented have learned that when they've, you know, when they get their approval, then enough was said, right?
Right. Yep.
Well, thank you all for making it happen. That, that's, it's vital to this project, so we really appreciate your cooperation all the way around.
Yep. Thank you, John. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, keep up the good work.
We will. So once, once Tim's got to look at the language yet, and once that is good, and I'm assuming it will be, then we'll have, we'll have one here for you to sign. So that John can get it onto DCR, hopefully the next, maybe even later today. I don't know yet.
That'd be great.
I'll walk it around if I have to.
Okay.
Need to do. Thanks.
Very good.
Take care.
Jamie, back to you.
Okay. Then, let's see here, I've got a couple of, or a few provider contracts for the Renova Center. These are annual contracts that we have for the providers, which rarely change. We've been, we've had very dedicated and loyal providers over the years for services rendered, and they are, I'll, I'll read them all, and then you can take your motion if you'd like. First Aid and Safety Patrol provides emergency and non-emergency ambulance, ambulance transport for residents of Renova at an annual subscription rate of $40 per bed. That's no change in the rate. Developmental Disability Resources provides evaluations for each resident and behavioral support plans for adaptive skill levels, et cetera. $94 an hour, no change in that rate for 21, 22. Apex Rehab Solutions provides physical occupational speech therapy for the residents. Their rates are $70 per hour for physical therapy and 68 for both occupational and speech therapy. And those are, those are static rates for 20, 21, 22. And Medical Director of the facility is UPS, UPMC Primary Care Fredericksburg, provides 24/7 care and accessibility for examination treatment for all Renova residents and consultation. And they were, by the way, very, very instrumental through COVID, very good to work with and very available. And they are coming in at a rate of 1,090 per month versus 1,060 per month prior year, 2.8% increase. And lastly, Arthur Zeiss Loft Training and Consulting. Consulting Services and Preparation of Facility Program Cost Reports, waiver requests to the state, and also submits a facility budget and agreed upon procedures to the county. Mary Ann Haster, you probably would recall, we worked with her quite a bit over the last few years. She's done some phenomenal things as far as the, you know, gaining more waivers and, and financial stability for the Renova Center and saving the general fund significant amount of money, amounts of money. Their rate is actually going up from 165 an hour to 175 an hour for the executive rate, which is a 6% increase and a 4%, 4.5% increase in the rate for, for the other associate and administrative rates. So would ask your approval on that batch of provider agreements.
I'll make a motion to approve the provider contracts to Renova Center as outlined in the request and presented by our county administrator.
Now second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion needed? If not, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. So ordered.
All right, I have some appointments to boards and authorities that the Commissioners are responsible for, first being the Board of Trustees, the Governor Dick, Clarence Shock Memorial Park. And we have two members whose terms are up and are seeking reappointment. The first is David Brightbill of Iron Master Road, Lebanon. The other, Douglas Becker of New Shakers Town Road, Burnville. You'll recall Senator Brightbill was just recently appointed to fill out the term of Frank Eichler, and that term is up end of June, so seeking a, a reappointment. And Mr. Becker is a professor at Lebanon Valley College and was added to the board about a year, maybe a year and a half ago because of his, A, his interest in the park, B, his professional expertise in terms of management of forest and environmental issues and such that he teaches at the college. So ask for your approval on reappointment of both of those.
I'll make a motion to appoint David Brightbill and Doug Becker to the Governor Dick Clarence Shock Memorial Park Board.
I'll second the motion.
It moved and seconded that we approved those reappointments. Any comment, question? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs. So moved.
Okay, the Housing Authority of the County of Lebanon has two requests. Okay, the Housing Authority of the County of Lebanon has two requests or recommendations, the first being Joe Connor. Who has been a member since two thousand sixteen and whose term expired in February. Has indicated his willingness to be reappointed for a five-year term on the Housing and Redevelopment Authority Boards. And also George Kaufman, who is a longtime member of the Housing Redevelopment Authority Board, has notified that he is due to health reasons unable to fill the remainder of his term. Which will expire in February of twenty-two. However. Leroy Leach, who previously served on the boards, but went off, is willing to come back and, and fill the remainder of Mr. Kaufman's term. And so that would be a remainder being until February of twenty twenty-two. So Leroy Leach and Joe Connor to the Housing and Redevelopment. I'm sorry, Housing and Redevelopment Authority Boards.
I'll make a motion to make those two appointments, Joe Connor and Mr. Leach to the Housing Authority Board.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approved those appointments and also with thanks to Mayor Kaufman for his dedicated service.
Absolutely.
All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs, so moved.
I have one disabled veteran exemption from real estate tax. It's a request for Marilyn McIntyre, Valley View Avenue, Anvil. Having met all the requirements for the program, seeking your approval.
I make a motion to approve Marilyn McIntyre for a real estate tax exemption in Lebanon County.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approved those. This motion, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs, so moved.
And lastly, I have a hotel tax grant fund application that is from South Londonderry Historical Commission. Presented or, or submitted by Cindy Skinner, Skinner, the president of the, the commission. They are looking to put in a Colebrook roadside marker to acknowledge the little. Do you call it a hamlet or a little, you know, village of Colebrook? To recognize that town and the cost, total cost for the production of the signs are three thousand one hundred ninety-one dollars. They're requesting a portion of that, two thousand five hundred thirty-four dollars. And they noted here that the South Londonderry Township will contribute their labor of the installation of the, of the signs when they, when they're available and arrive.
I'll make a motion to approve that hotel tax grant to the Historical Commission in South Londonderry.
A second emotion. I do have a question. Is this a state historical marker sign or just something that they're doing locally? Is there? I just was curious.
I think it's something, I think it's something they're doing locally. Otherwise, they, if it would have been something the state were putting up, they wouldn't need to seek the grant. So I think it's something they're doing on their own. Yep.
I think they're doing it on their own, but they did have to meet, obviously, state guidelines. That's why it's so expensive.
I'm presuming this is one of those, you know, a blue and yellow cast.
That was my question. Yeah, that was the consistency of the historical marker.
Okay, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs, so moved.
Okay, I believe that's everything I have. Don, we're good? Haven't missed anything there, right? Okay. That's all for me.
Alright.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
We stand adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.